Thank you for your service down there. I'm sure they appreciated it. All right, let's begin here. It is just after 6 o'clock. It is the night of our tax rate hearing. We're going to begin as we always do. We'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance if you all will join me in standing. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for a chance to gather together tonight and to take care of required county business. And we go into a new budget year. We have to consider a serious budget and a serious tax rate. And we're here to hear from our constituents and to discuss this tax rate tonight. And I pray that the decisions that this court will implement will be heavily influenced by you. In fact, we ask for your complete intervention and divine direction in establishing this budget and this tax rate. We just pray for your presiding over this meeting tonight and ask that you would guide us through any questions, that we would be able to answer them and properly respond to the folks that support this county with their tax dollars. We just turn this meeting over to you now in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for the record, today is the 14th of September 2017. It is 6:00 PM. And again, the single purpose or single agenda item for tonight is a public tax rate hearing. This will be the first of two. We will have our second and final about 11 days from now when we have our final commissioner's court meeting of the month. And at that time, we will have both a tax rate hearing as well as a budget hearing, and then the court will -- I'm sorry, I'm quoting the wrong date. That's Monday a week?
Monday.
That's right. I am looking at the calendar wrong. We'll have those hearings on Monday morning. Those will be the only agenda items. Then we will vote on the 20 -- look at the right calendar. That'll help me. That'll be on the 18th, four days from now. Then on the 25th, when we gather for the final commissioner's court meeting of the month, we will actually vote, take a final vote on both the tax rate and the budget. So, let me begin just with a brief statement here, and then we'll begin our time for public comment. But this is, again, our tax rate hearing to invite public comment on the proposed 2017-18 tax rate. The proposed rate, 47.9 cents per $100 evaluation. This is comprised of a 35.82 cent M&amp;O rate and a 12.08 interest and sinking fund or debt service rate. So 35.82 plus 12.08 for a total of 47.90. This is a 4.5 percent increase over the current year's overall rate of 45.84. So that's up 2.06 cents, or a 4.5 percent increase. The proposed rate is below the rollback rate of 49.28, but it's greater than the effective rate of 46.82. Some of the factors contributing for what the court feels is a need for an increase include: Item 1, an additional commitment to the city of Mount Pleasant for fire protection in an amount of $360,000 over where it had previously been. Item 2 is the implementation of a step program for the sheriff's office pay, which we believe will enable the sheriff's office to be more competitive with their pay and enable Sheriff Ingram to retain and continue to have the very best that he can possibly have there and continue to perform at the high level that he does. Item number 3, this is our first full year of the county road engineer department, which includes the engineer's salary, additional funding for road construction, additional equipment purchases, and an additional position in the maintenance barn where they maintain county equipment and vehicles. This is a major change for Titus County as we transition from a traditional road commissioner form of governance to a centralized road engineer department. Our road engineer, Roger Ledbetter, brings a change in philosophy that focuses on countywide prioritization, major rebuilds to targeted roads, and an emphasis on regular maintenance to achieve longer life from our roadways. This comes at a cost as we identify and fund these projects with an objective of increasing the life of the roads and reducing the continual need for small repair work. The continued commitment to better roads, if this is indeed what our residents want, will require future increases to the road and bridge budget to achieve better county roads that withstand the demands of normal traffic, timber transport, and energy-related transport. The abnormally heavy rains of the past two years have taken a hard toll, and we've lost quite a bit of ground. Item 4, a 2 percent raise for county employees with the exception of members of the court. Item 5, higher costs of health insurance. We recently completed a workshop to consider the possibility of converting to a fully funded insurance plan through Texas Association of Counties with Blue Cross Blue Shield instead of our current partially self-funded plan, which we've had for many years. But the court concluded this was not, at least at this time, a cost-saving move. Item 6, retirement benefits continue to creep up in the form of our retirement plan. This year's current increase will be about 10 percent to keep that currently funded. And then finally, just a few minor repairs to the courthouse and some county facilities. Commissioners, if you have any comments at this time, please feel free. Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to members of the audience. And I'm sorry for that buzz. Is that one still on?
Yeah.
For the time being.
Doing good.
Okay. Folks, this is your time. Commissioners, at this time, may not have a comment. They may respond to you, but at this time, I'll invite anyone that would like to address the court to come on up to the podium. Not that we can't hear you, but just to get it on the record as far as our audio and video recordings go. bridge. That doesn't include the cost of funding of the road engineer salary and those other items that I mentioned. Mr. Ledbetter had asked for in excess of about $1.2 million to begin a process of approximately 15-year seal coat rotation throughout all the roads in the county. And while we didn't feel like we could fund that kind of increase all at once, he was trying to let the court know that he felt like he did a pretty detailed analysis of what it was going to take in order to achieve that objective of being able to seal coat all the roads in the county at least on a once every 15-year basis. That would mean some roads would not get it that much, others would get it more frequently than that. At this time, the court felt like all that they could commit to his request at this time was $500,000.
So this is a lot of the same percentage of the road?
No, that $500,000 would be more like $25,000.
And if you're not in a public area, a public area, that the pack tiger, if they increase the road bridge on this year, having the pack tiger, no, this is the second system in the system. The dog, it's very hard to find. Other than that, there's a lot of very hard to handle. You have to do this. And I think, I think road bridge on, just maybe kind of starting to go by, just to prepare for the year.
And I think you have a valid point. You could press that. You appear to respond to that. Valid point. Raise up the point of why not leave the money to the same to enable us to see if the road engineer, the government is better, worse, the same as the road engineer.
Well, just recently, Mr. Field testified that we had cut the budget or not raised the budget two years since we started building the loop. And therefore, we had shortchanged the rolling bridge thing. And he thought we should add $1 million to it. And last year, they put $1 million in the budget. We didn't use it all, but that was the end. Based on those bases, based on those facts, that it has been shortchanged for however long the loop started, is why it probably should need to be increased a little bit. But when you say 25,000 or 25 percent, the rolling bridge is already $525,000 per precinct. That's four times that, $2 million, whatever it is.
That's all the salary?
I'm sorry.
The salary for the living? This $500,000 salary?
Only the one salary or all salaries?
Then that's a good point that you bring up. So that 25 percent that I quoted is understate. I don't know if it's 40 percent or if you're right about that.
You could be the commissioner, or the entire, and just the body of the church. It might be a hundred percent.
Could. Yeah, I don't know if there would be that much.
There would be a lot. And that, the way they have that, they have $500,000, $1,500,000, $1,500,000. I mean, maybe it's a little bit more than that. And maybe it's a third, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand, thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand, twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand, forty thousand, forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand, forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand, forty-nine thousand, fifty thousand, sixty thousand, seventy thousand, eighty thousand, ninety thousand, ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand, ninety-three thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, 100,000,000, 110,000, 120,000, 130,000, 140,000, 150,000, 160,000, 170,000, 180,000, 190,000, 200,000, 210,000, 220,000, 230,000, 240,000, 250,000, 260,000, 270,000, 280,000, 290,000, 300,000, 310,000, 320,000, 330,000, 340,000, 350,000, 360,000, 370,000, 380,000, 390,000, 400,000, 410,000, 420,000, 430,000, 440,000, 450,000, 460,000, 470,000, 480,000, 490,000, 500,000, 510,000, 520,000, 530,000, 540,000, 550,000, 560,000, 570,000, 580,000, 590,000, 600,000, 610,000, 620,000, 630,000, 640,000, 650,000, 660,000, 670,000, 680,000, 690,000, 700,000, 710,000, 720,000, 730,000, 740,000, 750,000, 760,000, 770,000, 780,000, 790,000, 800,000, 810,000, 820,000, 830,000, 840,000, 850,000, 860,000, 870,000, 880,000, 890,000, 900,000, 910,000, 920,000, 930,000, 940,000, 950,000, 960,000, 970,000, 980,000, 990,000, 100,000, 110,000, 120,000, 130,000, 140,000, 150,000, 160,000, 170,000, 180,000, 190,000, 195,000, 192,000, 193,000, 194,000, 195,000, 196,000, 197,000, 200,000, 210,000, 220,000, 230,000, 240,000, 250,000, 260,000, 270,000, 280,000, 290,000, 300,000, 310,000, 320,000, 330,000, 340,000, 350,000, 360,000, 370,000, 380,000, 390,000, 400,000, 410,000, 420,000, 430,000, 440,000, 450,000, 460,000, 470,000, 480,000, 490,000, 500,000, 510,000, 520,000, 530,000, 540,000, 550,000, 560,000, 570,000, 580,000, 590,000, 600,000, 610,000, 620,000, 630,000, 640,000, 650,000, 660,000, 670,000, 680,000, 690,000, 700,000, 710,000, 720,000, 730,000, 740,000, 750,000, 760,000, 770,000, 780,000, 790,000, 800,000, 810,000, 820,000, 830,000, 840,000, 850,000, 860,000, 870,000, 880,000, 890,000, 900,000, 910,000, 920,000, 930,000, 940,000, 950,000, 960,000, 970,000, 980,000, 990,000, 100,000, 110,000, 120,000, 130,000, 140,000, 150,000, 160,000, 170,000, 180,000, 190,000, 195,000, 196,000, 197,000, 198,000, 199,000, 200,000, 210,000, 220,000, 230,000, 240,000, 250,000, 260,000, 270,000, 280,000, 290,000, 300,000, 310,000, 320,000, 330,000, 340,000, 350,000, 360,000, 370,000, 380,000, 390,000, 400,000, 410,000, 420,000, 430,000, 440,000, 450,000, 460,000, 470,000, 480,000, 590,000, 600,000, 610,000, 620,000, 630,000, 640,000, 650,000, 660,000, 670,000, 680,000, 690,000, 700,000, 710,000, 720,000, 730,000, 740,000, 750,000, 760,000, 770,000, 780,000, 790,000, 800,000, 810,000, 820,000, 830,000, 840,000, 850,000, 860,000, 870,000, 880,000, 890,000, 900,000, 910,000, 920,000, 930,000, 940,000, 950,000, 960,000, 970,000, 100,000, 110,000, 120,000, 130,000, 140,000, 150,000, 160,000, 170,000, 180,000, 190,000, 195,000, 193,000, 194,000, 195,000, 196,000, 197,000, 198,000, 200,000, 210,000, 220,000, 230,000, 240,000, 250,000, 260,000, 270,000, 280,000, 290,000, 300,000, 310,000, 320,000, 330,000, 340,000, 350,000, 360,000, 370,000, 380,000, 390,000, 400,000, 410,000, 420,000, 430,000, 440,000, 450,000, 460,000, 470,000, 480,000, 490,000, 500,000, 510,000, 520,000, 530,000, 740,000, 750,000, 760,000, 770,000, 780,000, 790,000, 800,000, 810,000, 820,000, 830,000, 840,000, 850,000, 860,000, 870,000, 880,000, 890,000, 900,000, 910,000, 920,000, 930,000, 940,000, 950,000, 960,000, 970,000, 980,000, 990,000, 100,000, 110,000, 120,000, 130,000, 140,000, 150,000, 160,000, 170,000, 180,000, 190,000, 195,000, 196,000, 197,000, 198,000, 199,000, 200,000, 210,000, 220,000, 230,000, 240,000, 250,000, 260,000, 270,000, 280,000,